Yes. Anyway, the first meeting in October, October 1st. Welcome. And I'd like to ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Clovin.
I'm here.
Tillman.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Trupiano.
I'm here.
Mayor Diaz.
Here.
Thank you. You have a forum.
Thank you so much. Everybody's present and accounted for. And now we will please stand and we'll recite the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on the agenda is public comment for non-agenda items. And I don't have any cards, so I'm assuming nobody in Hoyer Hall. Excuse me. I'm wrong.
Buenas noches, don alcalde. Yes, I'm going to speak in Spanish, but I have a good reason to. Hace cuatro años, la primera declaración en esta ciudad para la herencia hispana, para el mes de herencia hispana, por el alcalde Diaz. Hace poco tuvimos un evento pequeño para reconocer el mes. Tuvimos mariachis, tuvimos carros, estuvo bonito el evento. Quiero darles las gracias a la miembro de la alcaldía Trupiano y Juan por los fondos y al alcalde. In English now. Four years ago, then-councilmember Diaz did the first proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month here in Clayton. Not too long, a couple of weeks ago, we had a little event, small event, using the mayor's car shows. We had the mariachi conjunto there. We had some lowriders out there. It's hard to get other car clubs when there's so many other events for the month, but it was nice. And I heard from many members of the Latino community who were very pleased with the event. And I want to thank both councilmembers Trupiano and Juan from the Events Committee for making the funds possible and for allowing the event to happen. We are the largest minority in this city, or the largest minority in the state. And yeah, it's nice to do events that recognize us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And normally, we don't respond to public comment, but I do want to thank Frank for coming up and making comments. But this was a true team effort. It just didn't happen. We had people on the city council, including leadership from the Committee for City Sponsored Events and Vice Mayor Kim Trupiano. We also had some very good support from our city clerk, Stephanie Cabera Brown. It was a great effort, a great day. It was our first time for a recognition for Hispanic Heritage Month. And again, not only with Vice Mayor Trupiano, but the entire community, as well specifically the Hispanic community, came out to make that all come off as it did. It was a wonderful event, and I appreciate that very much for your support. Okay, that's for all, we got one more.
You move so fast, Jim.
Hope you turned it on.
You have to turn it back on.
No, it was already on.
Red light.
First, thank you Frank and Jim for making that happen. That is a really important thing for this community here, and really do appreciate both y'all's efforts. And I'll touch on a little bit of that with my prepared comment here. So I've thought a lot about this when it comes to public service. I've seen far too many good people lose their goodness by serving. I've also seen far too many people retain their goodness and true desire to serve their communities that move away from this type of public service because they can never fill their hearts and souls in the ways that they desire. So I've always enjoyed my lane, and I've always stayed in it. But I see folks here tonight serving, and I kind of put that in quotes, by seeking power, by doing anything to get their way, by actually bullying their constituents and encouraging them to do the same to their neighbors who disagree. I see politicians out at events directing volunteers but not climbing ladders and getting their hands dirty. And I see politicians stand steadfastly by what they want to see, or what they want us to see as their choices. So there's a lot of people right now in this community that say that these leaders have a responsibility to show up to all events, to support all events, to be there for everybody. But there are some in the community that believe these leaders have a choice to only attend what they support. And I actually agree with you guys. You do have a choice to attend and support things like the car show, Oktoberfest, the Pride Parade, and so many other things. You guys have a choice to expose your children to such events, just as you have a choice to not expose them. That's your choice, and I accept that. Think what many would like to see from you all is accountability for your choices. So what I don't want to hear any longer, excuse me, is people like you, Jeff, saying things like they proudly marched in a pride parade if there ever was one and then stand against it when others in the community make one happen. So stop with the hypocrisy, guys. It's what people don't like about politicians. We do have some of y'all up here that do get their hands dirty. They do climb the ladder. They do serve on the Pride Board, on the Trails and Landscape Committee, and on other things that actually serve their constituents here in town, and they do so regardless of politics. So what I want to hear from people like Jeff is, I don't support the pride parade or the people that put it on, so I'm not going to come out and I'm not going to bring my family. At least Jim has never shown any public support for the LGBTQ+ community or for the parade, so I appreciate you not being a hypocrite in that way. Kim, it's amazing to watch Jeff continually interrupt you when you're talking up here, and you don't seem to take offense to it. I hate that he has a long history of interrupting women, but you've made your own choices and it seemingly is to do what you're told. Things tend to happen in Clayton in parallel to how they happen in our country. Just takes a few years. Take a look at what's going on around the country and what you're trying to hold on to in Clayton. History is not going to judge you well in a few years. Keep burning it all down, and we'll be here to clean up your mess. Y'all have made your choices, and let's just say this, there ain't going to be any statues of any of y'all downtown in Clayton anytime soon, just like so many in town. I'm tired of politicians being politicians. But for the rest, y'all, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else here in Hoyer Hall that wishes to address the city council? I will call you up waiting for public comment. Anything else on non-agenda items? And I don't see anybody in line unless you have anybody in queue.
There are no speakers online wishing to speak to the site.
Thank you very much. Okay, now I'm going to alter the public comment just slightly, and we have an election coming up on November 5th. And at this time, I'm going to ask for candidates to come up and give us three minutes. Start off with Mr. Ania.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Ania. I'm running for city council, and I just wanted to talk for a few minutes about something that's very important to our city, and I've spoken about it before, and that's housing. And we're working, as you know, we're working on, I'm on the Planning Commission, and we're working on getting that housing element passed by the state. And the state keeps changing the rules, so that's why we haven't had ours completed. And the, but since we're working on it, we're not in any trouble. But since I last spoke to you, the governor of our state currently decided that he signed three bills that affects us. One of them is that, one of them is that they are going to start to fine cities that are, that don't have their housing element finished. That doesn't affect us because we're working on ours with them, but also that are doing what the governor pointed out, what Half Moon Bay did, and that was slow-walking a project. They're not going to stand for that. I don't know what the definition of slow-walking a project is, but they're going to start fining for that. Another one, Senate Bill, or Assembly Bill 1898. If you don't have your eight-year housing element, and like I said, it doesn't apply to us yet because we're working on it, some cities don't have it, haven't submitted anything. There's 450 cities, fifteen, 415 cities in California. I don't know how many have not even submitted it yet. But what they're going to do is allow builders' remedy to come in and make proposals. Builders' remedy, for those that don't know, any developer can come in and say, I'm buying this part of this land here, and I'm going to build an eight-star apartment complex. Even though our zoning code says you can only go two or three stories, state law will then take that out, and they'll be able to build it. It's called builders' remedy. And Livermore, it's closest around here that I read about, Livermore said, the state can do that, but there's nothing in that law that says we have to approve the project. They can only propose it, and we don't have to approve it. But I'm sure there'll be another state law pretty soon that'll say, you have to approve it. That's the latest on housing. So we're moving forward with that. We have a consultant, as you know, and we're trying to get everything in order, and I think we're doing an excellent job at that. It just doesn't go to the same committee members that want us to make the changes. So, thank you for listening, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ania. Maria Shaver, Shriver, Schulman, I'm sorry. Maria Schulman. You need to write more plainly. I'm kidding you. Thank you. Maria, you're up.
Good evening, city council, mayor, chief. Really, that really got me. My name's Maria Schulman, and I'm running for city council. I'm here tonight to talk about the importance of accountability and transparency. These values are essential in leadership. It means being open and honest in all decision-making and being accountable for your results. That makes true leadership. I am an independent thinker who can collaborate and compromise with colleagues, and I plan on making that a priority if elected to council. Several benefits can come from transparency for both the city and its residents, and following some of the benefits. Improved relationships with the community and its residents, increased trust in the elected officials, and something our citizens have told us we need to improve upon in the survey that was done. Honest engagement with the community, providing them with a clear picture of the city's current situation and an honest forecast of the future. Better decision-making by making sure that you do your homework, asking the questions, meeting with staff, and being fully prepared when council meets. Conversely, some council members, including those running for reelection this year, have been increasingly eroding the transparency and accountability over the last four years. This erosion has led to mistrust and the appearance of unethical behavior and division within the community. They've put their needs and their personal agendas before the priorities of the city. This community needs someone who will be transparent and accountable for their actions. I am a woman who is accountable for my actions. I worked quietly but diligently to meet people where they are and understand the community's needs and desires and not just listen to the loudest voices. I take responsibility for everything that I do, good or bad. That's how we grow and improve as individuals, and I will bring that strength to city council. A vote for me is a vote for someone who is honest, trustworthy, hardworking, and accountable. My goal is to bring some common sense and leadership back to Clayton. Please vote for me on November 5th and visit my website at mariaforclayton.com. I need your support to move Clayton in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Ms. Tillman.
Thank you. Good eve, oh, do I need to wait for the timer? Great. Good evening. I'm Holly Tillman, and I'm running for reelection because residents need a leader who will listen and fight for all Claytonians. I first became involved in the Clayton community when our daughter started at MDE, and I stepped up to serve as president of the Parent Faculty Club. I later served on the School Site Committee and the Playfield Committee. I also co-ran the St. Bonaventure CYO Track and Field Program with my husband and served as a board secretary for the CBCA. In 2020, I won my seat on Clayton City Council, standing on a platform centered around unity and constructive dialogue. Transparency, inclusivity, and community wasn't just a campaign slogan, but what I have demonstrated during my tenure. Over the last four years, I've been a vocal advocate for professionalism, good governance, fiscal stability, and our quality of life, and I have served in various roles, including vice mayor, chair of the Geological Hazard Abatement District, or GAD, budget and audit committee member, garbage and recycling committee member, city manager search committee, city council liaison to the school district, the Clayton Library Foundation, and the Trails and Landscape Committee. I'm chair of the League of California Cities Community Services Policy Committee. I'm on the executive board of the East Bay League of California Cities, and last week I was most recently elected to serve as a second vice president by my peers. I'm on the Mount Diablo Education Foundation Board, and I'm the director of student engagement. I'm on the CCTA Para Transit Coordinating Councilmember. I'm chair of Clayton Pride and I was a co-MC for Conquer Juneteenth. While on the council, I've spearheaded firewise communities in our community to prevent wildfires, formulated the city's outdoor cannabis ordinance, approved funding for recreational infrastructure in a new playground, increased police officer salaries to recruit and retain high-quality officers, approved funding for an additional sergeant, advocated for responsible budgeting, sought new funding for critical infrastructure and city services, advocated for a more inclusive community by organizing the Clayton Pride Parade, Clayton's Day of Service, and Clayton Speaks webinars, advocated for modern technology in city hall so that we have an easier way to apply for permits, and improved customer service. I've championed good governance, fiscal stability, and professionalism because we deserve a Clayton that works for everyone and values all residents. And I believe strongly that if we work together, we can prioritize public safety, improve wildfire prevention, protect open space, and maintain our infrastructure so that Clayton's incredible community resources are accessible and enjoyed by all. I'm honored to be endorsed by trusted local leaders like Contra Costa County Supervisor Ken Carlson, Sharice Cound, who's a board member for the school district, eight former Clayton mayors, and they all share my vision for Clayton. I also received endorsements from the Contra Costa Building and Construction Trades, the Democratic Party of Contra Costa County, the Labor Council, and numerous Clayton residents. If you'd like to learn more about my campaign, you can visit my social media, which is @hollyforclayton. And ballots will be delivered next week, and I would be honored to receive your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. I'm going to turn the gavel over to Vice Mayor Kim Trupiano as I go forward and make my comments.
I am Jim Diaz, current mayor of the city of Clayton. Over a forty-year resident of this community, have been serving on the city council since 2012. My campaign slogan, "Positioning Clayton for Success." My priorities related to that include public safety, that is, making sure Clayton has the resources to keep this community safe for all members of the community. Quality of life, maintaining Clayton's character and small-town charm. That is one thing that I keep hearing over and over again from the community members that approach me. That is one of my top priorities to hear. And I'm a good listener. I'm very accessible. I'm at all of the major events. People come up to me and pass on things to me. I have also publicized very widely my email and telephone number in both publications, The Gazette and The Pioneer. So people do call me, and we respond to them accordingly. My community activities have included working with the CBCA, where I have been a member over 26 years. I have chaired the Clayton Classic Golf Tournament on at least four occasions, and then I also chaired the Art and Wine Festival on two occasions, very challenging events. I also led the effort for the Hispanic Heritage Month recognition for the car shows that we have every year. But that was not, I didn't do that alone. I had help from peoples like our vice mayor, Kim Trupiano, and our staff, Stephanie Cabera Brown. They did the lion's share legwork of making this happen. We had also support, wide support, from the Hispanic community. My biggest accomplishments, I can say, over my term and on the city council, one, the one that I point out to regularly, I led the effort, championing the reopening of Fire Station 11. During the economic downturn of about ten years ago, that fire station was put into reduced status, and it was really a concern among our community. I, with a number of other people, got together, and we were down lobbying the county supervisors, the members of the fire board, and the consulting firm that they brought in to get that fire station open and again. Championing, working with the city council to get the police department back off of the bottom of the pile salary-wise, into the mid-part of the, in part of the game there. Very, very proud of that. And one of my favorites is the interim city manager that we just recently had, Adam Pulsiger, who helped us position Clayton for success. I want to make one final comment. For my support for the LGBTQ community goes back to the 2024, excuse me, 2022 election when I was the only city council member that supported Ken Carlson, who is now seated on the county board of supervisors. I assisted in his campaign, and I helped him get elected. My commitment is for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Pardon me, if the audience can please not interrupt the proceedings of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Do we, do we have anybody online further for any comments?
There are no speakers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm going to close the public comment portion for non-agenda items and get into our regular agenda. And I'm going to move forward with the consent calendar, and we have four items in there. And I leave it open to my colleagues to see if there's any issue they want to pull and discuss.
Well, I, yeah, thank you, Mayor Diaz. So, a couple of things. I did have a pretty lengthy discussions already with our city manager and assistant city manager on the much more consulting amendment, and we did get a copy of the contract and the amendment. It was updated in our agenda. I don't know if everybody saw that, so I appreciate that. But I just, the UBS, is it my understanding that James Dill is joining us this evening, and he's online to talk about the investment advisory services?
Mr. Dill is online, and he's available for questions.
Okay. Because I think he should personally address this because we've only discussed it in the budget and audit committee meeting to kind of talk about the transition to an advisory service account.
Vice Mayor, he's not prepared for a presentation tonight, just for questions.
Right, but to discuss what our transition and answer any questions.
Can I, can I weigh in for a moment? When we had our budget and audit committee meeting, I think we gave some feedback to Mr. Dill about the nature of a presentation that we were asking for to present to the full council, because this is, this does represent a change in how we are doing things, and we want to ensure that everyone had an opportunity to interact with Mr. Dill, ask questions, and understand what the proposal actually was. So I was a little, I was a little surprised that we didn't have this as an action item. And I think that it would make sense to do that so that Mr. Dill can actually, we can do him justice, and so he could present what his proposal actually is, rather than, it is a very lengthy document in the agenda packet. I think it represents like 45 pages, and the font is very small. But it would be helpful, I think, if he had that opportunity and we all had the opportunity to review that with him, because I think there was some specific guidance, or guidance is probably the wrong word, requests that were made during that meeting, and I was hoping that we could follow through with those. So that'd be my take. I think it's probably, if he's not going to present, I'm not sure I'd be prepared to say we should make this significant change without that type of discussion. I think we owe it to both our council and to the community to have that discussion in our, in one of our meetings. That'd be my take, but.
Shall we pull the item and move it to the next meeting in October? And we will have Mr. Dill prepare the presentation that he provided to the budget audit committee.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be my request, but I don't know how others feel about that.
Well, I agree with that, and I guess we just have to make sure that he's available to do that. But this is a pretty significant transition for our city, and there is some fiscal impact, and I think it would be better if he had a presentation to walk everybody through it. That's my personal feeling, so I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it.
Go ahead.
No, I would agree. I would like to see a presentation. The only other question that I had on this one was whether or not we did like a bidding comp or an RFP. Did we just take them because that was our current manager and we wanted to give them this business? Or did we find out if someone else can do the same portfolio management for less?
That, you know, we asked for him, or sorry, we asked for Mr. Dill to come back to us with a proposal so that we could evaluate it, and we were hoping that he would present to us so that we could give him direction. And that was the extent. I think there was, we did have a fairly lengthy discussion about like what this could represent. And so we were hoping that that was enough guidance so that he can come back. We didn't want to go too far down without involving the rest of the council.
Yeah, I saw the meeting where you asked him to come back and give average cash balances, et cetera, and answer some questions. So that would be my only other question is comparables.
It's a fair question. Legal standpoint, as far as our contracts, do we have a requirement to go out to bid to two, three contractors for a similar service order? Can we just award at length like this?
I'd have to look at our purchasing policy, but we can do that and confirm. It sounds like this item is going to get pulled anyways for consideration.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything further?
Not on that. The only other question that I had is on item 4B. I think the vice mayor just mentioned that there was a change. I looked at this this afternoon. Did it change again? She's mentioned that there was a change today.
There was not a change to the staff report. The contract amendment was added to the agenda.
And if I could clarify, the contract amendment will include what the agenda provides for, which is it will extend the term until January 31st, 2025. What the current agreement goes through the end of the year, and so we'll be adding a provision that extends it till January 31st, 2025, which the agenda and the staff report provide for.
But my question is, was that on there this afternoon? Because that's when I reviewed it again. Did it change since 4:30?
The staff report has not changed at all.
Nothing changed since 4:30?
Nothing has changed.
Okay, great.
Nothing has changed on the staff report since last Thursday.
Okay.
It was just a copy of the contract.
Okay.
That I requested. I wanted to see a copy of the contract.
Okay.
So is the document that's in front of us, does this supposed to represent the change?
No, it will have an additional provision that just extends the date of the term until January 31st, 2025. The current amendment before you includes the compensation increase.
I'm sorry, can you point, so it's not redlined, so it's a little difficult when we're on the fly here at the dais to hear that something was different, even if it wasn't critical? I don't understand what you're trying to tell me changed then, or what we're looking at.
The provisions for the agreement are to increase the compensation and extend the term.
Yep.
And that's what, that's what the First Amendment will do. The attached First Amendment that's in the packet includes the increase in compensation. It does not include the extension of the term till January 31st, 2025. So that's all that will be added.
Okay, but it's not here you're going to add it, and you're telling us that.
Exactly.
Thank you.
I will be adding it, but the staff report and the agenda description already request your approval for that extension.
Okay, and we only need it to go through the 31st of January versus a full Okay, and we only need it to go through the 31st of January versus a full year through next year like we had originally? That was originally before us, two weeks ago. Is that accurate?
That is correct. Okay.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Clovin.
Just want to confirm, this is $80,000 that was not included in our budget last in June that we approved?
That is, there is part of it that is included in the budget.
How much is that is included in the budget?
There was $40,000 included in the budget for consulting work, but there is also some money for cost savings for positions that we are currently not staffing. That's where the other money is coming from.
So this is an unbudgeted item there for the budget amendment is required. The cost for the additional fiscal and human resources contract will not exceed $80,000. It would have been nice to, you know, really summarize that, how that relates to the budget in future reports, so we know exactly what that is. I mean, we spent $61,000 in radios last week for the, or notebooks for the police department. They needed it, don't get me wrong, but it wasn't budgeted. And now we're doing it again. We're spending money that was not budgeted in, in June. This is the reason why I requested that we have another week to have a, this, you know, review of the budget, and that was shut down. But these are the types of things that, you know, that's what a budget's for, is to put these things which we thought would be necessary in them and review them, instead of giving a balanced budget, is what I'm deciding.
Mr. Wan.
Can you clarify? So $40,000 for consulting included, this will consume some of that. And savings on vacancies will consume some of that. And some of it was included in 2023-
Some of it was included in the last fiscal year, correct?
2023 fiscal year. So I think that's part of my confusion as to like where it lays out in terms of like, there's, there's at least three variables, and it's not really, it's not super clear here. The way that it's notated, would, it would give the reader the impression that we're increasing, or we're doing 80,000 of spend on budget, but I, I think that number is probably less than 80, but I, I can't tell what it is. So that, that piece, I think, would be helpful to, to clarify. And I think when we talked at our last meeting, one of the things that we, that was requested was like a breakout of what service, like the services, the actual services, because in the amendment, this is amendment number one. Amendment number one is increasing the amount, and then I think we're going to also increase the, the, adjust the time period. We don't, I, I don't know if we ever say like the, the scope of services specifically in the contract. I think the con, the contract that's presented here is really just the amendment, and it says everything else is the same. That's what, I mean, that's how it reads. So it's not super clear what we're buying. I, I kind of know what we're buying, but it would be nice if it were laid out. Like, we've discussed it, but I, I think it would be valuable so that, that discussion is memorialized in the actual staff report. That's how I would, that's how I'd lay it out. So those two things, like the clarity around the scope of services, as well as the math on the actual figures, would be helpful. So I, I'm not sure exactly how we proceed with that, but I mean, it would, it's hard to say like, let's go for it if it's, if it's not super clear what we're, the impact of what we're going for.
I concur with Councilmember Wan. It seems like it's been brought back with a lot more clarity.
The other, sorry, sorry. The only other question that I would ask or add to that, statement that I would add to that is, it mentioned that we had exceeded the amount that the previous city manager had the authority to put into place. And so how to, how do we ensure that that doesn't happen again, even though we're saying that it will not exceed 80,000? It wasn't supposed to exceed 30,000, but it did. So how do we avoid that in the future? That'd be the other, I mean, you don't have to answer on the fly, but something else that I would like for you to bring back, so that we understand better how to keep that from happening again, because it clearly happened even though there was a contract in place.
And it would have been helpful. I know we had a little bit of this discussion at the last meeting. So this was for much more consulting services really before Regina joined the staff permanently, her advisory role, going back to June, well, really even before that, I think, right? April, May, June. And, and Adam had the authority to approve 30,000, but, and we all agree, we should have amended the contract then, once we were getting ready to hit the 30, so that it was clear, and rather than it's October, where we're kind of back paying, because have we paid these bills already?
Yes, these invoices have been paid.
Okay. So, and then the remaining amount is the 27,000 and some odd that will get us through January 31, correct? And that's HR services, some management analyst services.
That's correct.
Okay. It is a little confusing.
Yeah, sorry. I, I mean, obviously, we have to, we have to pay for the services that were rendered, so I don't think that's in question. I just think it, it would be helpful, there's no urgency or criticality, like, to do this. So I would think that it'd be helpful just for, to memorialize the thing with more clarity. As I say, the thing, but more clarity would be helpful, so.
We need to do more work on this item, correct? So we're pulling it?
Yes.
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 All right. Anything further? And we'll entertain a motion on the remaining items. Oh, public comment, excuse me. Yes.
Thank you. I do concur with what you're doing with the issue with UBS. Three years ago, I believe, I asked about the matter. Councilmember Clovin was the mayor. There was no reply. What was the relationship? Who made the investment decisions? We got no answers. This is finally being looked at. Because of what I do for a living, I do understand what's, you know, what is being proposed, what it's supposed to end up looking like. So, you know, to fast forward, it is a great idea. However, you guys do need a presentation, okay? It has to come before you, so you understand what you're buying. Versus what we've been doing, this, it is going to be a much better alternative. It pretty much is what I do. Let's put it that way, okay? Hopefully, you can get RFPs, because given the size of what the city has, heck, I probably wouldn't take the account, so. But you are doing the right thing by bringing it back. And if Mr. Dill is on, yeah, he, you need to do a good presentation and explain in layman's terms what it is that the city would be getting if they proceeded with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gavidia. Anything further? Do we have any other person in the Hoyer Hall that wishes to address this item on public comment? Seeing none anybody online for this item.
There are no members online.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public comment on the consent calendar and bring it back to the city council for action.
So I would move approval of consent items A and C, 4A and 4C, and continue items B and D.
I'll second.
And seconded, first, motion by Councilmember Wan, second by Councilmember Tillman. Will the city clerk, please take the roll?
Thank you. And just to reiterate for the record, we are taking the motion on items A, 4A and 4C. We will be continuing items 4B and 4D.
That is correct.
On that motion, Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Wan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Trippiano?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes. Thank you very much. That concludes the consent calendar. Very good. We will now move into recognition and presentations, which include first, a proclamation for declaring November 6th as National Shelter in Place Education Day. We do have a proclamation, and I'm going to briefly run through it, because I don't believe anyone is here to accept that, but we will make sure that a official copy will get to them. But first, whereas public and private schools and childcare centers throughout Contra Costa County will be participating in the Shelter in Place Drill on November 6th, whereas Contra Costa Community Awareness Emergency Response Group, CAER, is, is sponsoring the 23rd Annual Shelter in Place Drill and assisting schools and childcare centers with their emergency preparedness. Whereas, emergency response agencies, including the fire, sheriff, health officials, and all others related to the shelter in place as the immediate action to take case, take in case of a hazardous release. Finally, I'm going to cut to the rear and say, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Clayton recognizes the importance of preparing for emergencies and encourages participation in the Contra Costa County group as a public educational effort in support of the parents, teachers, students, and staff that will be participating with hundreds of other schools and childcare centers in the Shelter in Place Drill. The mayor and the city council of the City of Clayton proclaim November 6, 2024, as Shelter in Place Education Day. Thank you. Now, I believe we have a presentation from the code enforcement group and their activities. And is any, oh, here we go. Thank you.
We have a PowerPoint. Just give us a second.
So I don't think I've met everyone. I have met a handful of you. I'm Jason McKinley. I'm your code enforcement officer with the City of Clayton, right? This is Jordiann. She's my supervisor with Foreleaf, who came along as a big support for me. I'm not used to the public speaking as much, so.
But I love that he's doing it, because it's good practice. Alrighty, so hi, my name is Jordiann. I am a code enforcement supervisor for Foreleaf. And then this is Jason, who is your code enforcement officer for the City of Clayton. We put this presentation together so that we can kind of explain and go through a little bit more about what code enforcement is and what we do in the City of Clayton.
So what you will learn today and why, what are the most common code enforcement cases we handle with a standard operations of a code enforcement division, how are cases managed, how work without a permit cases are handled, what, what other agencies we collaborate with, and you'll get an update on department metrics and an update on current and going forward initiatives. What you will not hear today is any specifics on active or recently closed cases.
And the reason why we're not disclosing details of any specific case is the potential liability for the City of Clayton, as well as we want to protect the privacy of the constituency.
In the City of Clayton, in my experience so far in the last three, four months, the most common issues that I've come across are mostly recreational vehicles or unregistered vehicles parked illegally, and then property maintenance, general upkeep of individual properties, weed abatements, down fences, those types of things. Then you get work without permits, and then others, like expired business licenses, illegal, or improperly installed real estate signs and roosters, things of that nature, yeah.
Roosters are a big problem.
Yeah, I've, I've had, I've had roughly about eight cases that I've come across with roosters so far. So, yeah. So actually, not listed on here is complaint-based, or I'm sorry, proactive-based code enforcement, which is where I go out into the community and I'm looking for violations. I drive around and make a, make a round of the community and try and see what I can find and document that, and then go back and start the process. Other than that, the typical code enforcement practices would be complaint-based. Once we have a complaint, then we move to a response, then a notice, corrective action, and then compliance or escalated code enforcement. So complaint-based, we usually receive our complaints through email or phone calls in person in the office, or with, or from other staff members with the city, like maintenance or something. They'll notice something while they're out, and they'll notify me. Once we have a complaint, we'll go out and verify that complaint with an investigation or an inspection from the right away. If, if a complaint or violation is verified, we move into the noticing. We give everyone due process, we write it up with specifics on what exactly in the, in the municipal code has been violated, and then send that out with the time, with the timely manner, I'm sorry, with a reasonable timetable for the property owner or the occupant to correct those issues. If those, if those fail, then we escalate code enforcement and go into more of like admin citation or legal avenues if, if we have to.
Oh, yeah. We'll talk, yeah, we'll talk into the mic.
Sorry.
It's for the people on the camera. Alrighty, so I just wanted, we wanted to break down just a quick, like, how we handle a work without permits case. So first, we receive the complaint. Then we will respond to the complainant, usually to get more information if we can, any pictures that maybe they have. And then we do our research. So we are professional investigators. So we, I'm so sorry. So we will, we will Google Maps you. We will find out where, we find out what was done without a permit. Just Google Maps has this really cool thing where you can date it back years and years, so you can see what a house looked like, see what a house looked like in 2010 versus now, so you can kind of compare. But you also want to determine the property owner, search GIS, search zoning and planning, and then also go through to see if they have any code enforcement cases open, or any permits that they have issued, expired, finalized, in progress. And then we'll do our initial inspection. So if we can confirm the complaint from the public right away, we don't need to make contact. So if we do, we'll take pictures, go back to the office, draw up our notice. But if we have to verify the complaint by making contact with the occupant, usually we'll do what's called a knock and talk. So we just knock on the door, hey, are you home? Can I come out and can I check this? So most of the time, it's a yes. Sometimes it's like, no, you're not coming in right now, which I completely, we completely understand that we're coming into your house, your space. So we want to make sure to, so if they deny us, we'll go through and send an inspection notice, set a date for them, and then we'll do the inspection. But, so once we do confirm the complaint, if we do a knock and talk and they let us in, they, so after, sorry, go to the next slide. All right, so after we have confirmed the complaint, we'll go back to the office, and we will create our notice. The notice of violation will list all the municipal codes that were being violated, along with corrective action in order to bring your property into compliance. We also need to make sure that we give them a reasonable, a reasonable amount of time to come into compliance. So if, you know, there was a work without permits case, I can't give them a 10-day compliance date. That's not realistic, right? It's going to take at least 30 days to get a permit. So we need to make sure to give them a reasonable amount of time to comply. And that's sometimes what people don't understand, the community that call, call back the next day, hey, my, my neighbor's fence is still, you know, eight feet tall. It's not going to happen overnight, but it's, but it's happening. It's, we're making it work. So after we have sent out the notices, we're going to send them via regular and certified mail, and then we'll work with the owner or the occupant to come into compliance. And then we will sometimes review the permit for accuracy to, before it's issued, just depending on the case. And then we'll re-inspect for compliance, and then once it's, you know, all good and finalized, the permit has been moved to final status, then we'll close the case. So that's beginning to end. Complaint, complaint to close for a work without permits case.
Some of the other agencies we collaborate with would be the Clayton PD, Contra Costa County Fire Department, the City of Clayton Public Works Department, Adult Protective Services, Child Protective Services. Oh, sorry. So one of the, one of the first things when I met with Adam- So one of the, one of the first things when I met with Adam upon arriving in Clayton was, he asked me to work my way through the last four or five years worth of cases, see what still needed to be resolved, what was an issue, what wasn't an issue, close whatever was already taken care of but never really finalized in the case files. So this, this kind of represents, or this does represent what I've been doing for the last four months. As you can see, most of the unregistered vehicles and RVs and property maintenance are pretty much the biggest issues. So I've personally gone over 200, so I have updated this, I forgot to send it to her, I apologize for that. So I've personally gone through the last four years, it's 207 cases. There's been 188 of them that have been closed. We currently have 19 open cases that are active that I'm currently working on amongst other complaints that I'm in the process of building case files for and, and working on investigating them.
If I may ask, on those cases that you say are working on, do we need to consider any changes or upgrading of our legislative codes to give you more authority or whatever to make sure that you're addressing? For example, the one I hear the most about are parked RVs.
Correct. As of now, I've been really working on just focusing on anything that's impeding the right of way. So if somebody has an RV parked in their driveway and it's hanging over into the sidewalk, I'm going to call it out. If it's parked on the street or on the sidewalk, I'm going to call it out. If it's safely pushed back into their driveway as far back as they can, the Muni code does say that that is against the Muni code, right? It has to be concealed from public right of way. I think it's 60%.
What about the temporary parking that was taking place out on Marsh Creek Road in the open space? Are you aware of it?
I'm not aware of that, sir.
Because I got several calls on RVs that were out there, they've been since moved.
Right, that may be prior to me getting here. I'm not aware of that situation, yeah.
Anybody, pop, chime in if anybody's got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one about the, the page before this one, the complaints versus inspections. It says, "The numbers reflective of knock and talk inspections and confirmed violations resulting." What is the percent of the complaints that you get versus the ones that are actual, like the percentage? Somebody's calling and complaining versus you actually needing to do something, like there's an actual violation?
Right. Majority of them are complaint-based. So I have just moved into more of a proactive base because I've worked out, worked through the last four years' worth of cases.
Let me ask it a different way.
Yes, ma'am.
Someone calls and says, "My neighbor has done XYZ,"
Okay.
And they complain, and you go out there. Is it the majority of the time they're right and it's an actual complaint? I mean, it's an actual violation or?
Majority of the time, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, that's what I meant, the percentage of them that are actual violations versus complaints.
Very rarely do I go out and there's not a violation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It has happened.
They're everywhere. We have to spread awareness.
It, it, it does happen, but usually when we get a complaint, it's, it's pretty accurate.
Okay.
Yeah. At that time, most time, most of the, most individuals, they look up the Muni code on their own to verify that, like, okay, you can't use a blower at 2:00 in the morning, which is one I just recently got.
Oh, bless, okay.
So, I mean, they know that there's noise ordinances, right?
Sure.
So when I get a complaint like that, then we start looking into it, it's pretty valid.
Okay.
Just gently remind them that there are rules. So, okay, so current code enforcement initiative's underway. So currently, we have our amazing code enforcement officer, Jason McKinley, and he started in June this year. He, this slide's different.
It is different.
It is different. There is a significant improvement in case detail and accuracy, and a significant improvement in case intake adjudica, adjudication and resolution. And then what also isn't in here is his proactive enforcement work, which we've covered, a lot of weed abatement, property nuisance, and RVs, like you guys have said. So he has done a lot of work so far, and I'm super proud of him, so you guys are very lucky to have him.
Sorry about that, I thought I sent over the update.
No, you're good, you're good.
And that's, that's the conclusion of our presentation.
Does anybody have any questions?
Great, if any of the members of the city council, vice, vice.
Well, I've met Jason on several occasions, and I just want to say, you know, we get a weekly executive summary from our, whether it's city manager, assistant city manager, and I just think the work that you're doing is remarkable. I am impressed that you've cleaned up four years of cases, and you're being proactive, and your reports are very detailed, and we appreciate that, so thank you for all your hard work. You have done a lot since June, so thank you very much, yes.
Anybody else from the city council that have any, Mr. Wong?
I, I echo those same comments. I think I may look forward to your reports the most in the, in the week. So they, they are, they are great. I may not invite you to my, to parties, but it's.
Okay.
But he reads your.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wong, can I have something?
Should we take some comments from anybody? Everybody's pointing, what's going on?
I would just like to add a few things.
Let us know.
Code enforcement here has always been a challenge because we never had enough to have a full-time employee, but to throw that responsibility in with all the other responsibilities that our previous situation had, they didn't have enough time to get out in the field and do what needed to be done. So I think this has been a great situation. It's, I like reading Jason's updates every week too, and seeing all the stuff that's being accomplished, and the fact that you've been able to get through four years' worth of backlog in such a short time, I commend you for that, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? We're going to open up a public comment, anybody who wish to address or ask questions, please come forward. Mr. Denzel, how would I not know that? Come on forward. Come up to the microphone, please, so we can hear you.
Didn't want to crowd the bike, but where can we file a complaint?
You can call the city office and file one. We actually have a code enforcement email, but you could, there's my personal card.
Perfect.
So you can email that, or you can reach, reach me on my work, work cell phone.
Thanks, Jason. Like the chief said, you're doing great work, man.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else in the audience wish, yes, Mr. Walcott?
I was a little, my, my icky bones. It's not funny. In the past, I've been on, lived in the city for over 40 years, and I was on the council for 11 years.
Okay.
The code enforcement's always been complaint-driven.
Correct.
And now I'm hearing that you drive around the community and look for violations. Is that, did I, was hearing you correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's, that's really different for our community, and it might start causing, and this is a council decision, it might start causing some backlash from our citizens.
Okay.
So it's more heavy-handed than it's been in the past. Clayton's always been a very friendly city, you know, and the residents love code enforcement, they love our police department, they love city staff, and I'd hate to see us go too far the other way and keep it, if you're going to go driving around, make sure that the violations are serious and not, not petty violations, and I think it'll go a long way for, you know, keeping this friendly atmosphere in our little town. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we like to make sure that we use the friendly approach, right? Hey, this is the problem, and this is how you fix it. We'll be back in two weeks to check on it, okay? That's the extent of our enforcement, for the, like, if it's the first contact. So if we do come across a violation in the field, then we address it with the occupant or the owner. We aren't going to send a random citation to you in the mail, you are going to, it's due process, you have to get a certain amount of violations before you get a citation in the mail. So that's what everyone's kind of afraid of, is, oh, I'm going to get a citation in the mail from code enforcement. That's not how it works. You will get, you, you will get the opportunity to come into compliance before anything like that is, is sent to you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. One final call for people out in the audience.
And just to clarify for myself as well, I have a really good habit about going and knocking no matter what. So just because I, I verify a violation by driving through a neighborhood, I always make an attempt to go to the door, knock, try and establish contact with somebody. If, if worse come to worse, I'll leave my, a note on one of my cards and stick it on their door, mailbox, whatever. That way I can open a conversation before I just send you a notice, yeah.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience here in Hoyer Hall? Seeing none, and anybody online?
There are no speakers outside.
Okay, I'm closing the item on this, and thank you very much again. Keep up the good work, guys.
Appreciate it.
All right. Okay, we'll now go into reports, and the first one is the city manager and his second report to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, a couple of quick things, and we'll list this information on our social media later tomorrow.
Could you guys move outside? Could you guys move out to the lobby? Thank you.
Thanks.
Code enforcement needing code enforcement.
I know, right? Noise ordinance happening. This Thursday, October 3rd, PG&E has hired Core Trees to send crews to remove trees, branches, dead vegetation along the hillside west of Oak Street near downtown and behind Mountain Diablo Elementary. There will be some lane controls and also some path controls done by them, so just be aware that there will be some action in that area. We've let our maintenance crews know and our police department know, so if there are phone calls or, or questions, they're aware. After the vegetation work is completed, PG&E is going to replace a leaning joint power pole. That work's going to start on Thursday, the 17th at 9:00 PM, and they're going to work through Friday, the 18th at 6:00 AM. So it's overnight work, people will lose power, and PG&E will alert those residents that will be losing power ahead of time, so they will know they won't have an alarm clock that morning to get to work on time. And the last thing this weekend, everybody knows, Oktoberfest, Saturday and Sunday from 11, Saturday's 11 to 8, Sunday's 11 to 6. Carnival starts Friday, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, so that'll be my first Oktoberfest, I'm looking forward to it.
Great, welcome, welcome to that. Okay, anything else, Mr. City Manager? Okay, thank you very much. That concludes item number six. Number seven, public hearing, we have none. And now we move on to item 8A, which is an action item for discussion on whether to create a city flag. Let me first give a little bit of an overview of our presenter, and you should have, the city council and the staff should have received a video that was pretty detailed on, I guess, the philosophy on flag creation and so forth. We're going to be, we're hearing from Mr. Ted K. this evening. He is a vexiologist. Can you say that three times fast? In other words, he studies flags, and he's the secretary of the North American Vexiological Association. He wrote the guidebook on flag design. He has consulted at over 100 cities on flag design and obdo, excuse me, adoption, and he shares his knowledge as a contribution to their civic identities. National media frequently consult with him for interviews on his expertise. He has spent 20 years living in the Bay Area and comes to us tonight from Portland, Oregon, he's via Zoom, and let me just say this, this is strictly for discussion. It is, there is no commitment here, we are just establishing a baseline understanding for how do you go about thinking about a flag. This has been brought up in our city council about maybe 10, 15 years ago when Pete Lawrence was the, was the mayor, and it's sort of been sitting on the back table, and I brought it up again about five years ago, and now we're going to get a presentation on an expert, and I will now turn it over to Mr. K., and the city clerk will bridge him in, and there he is.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm delighted to talk to you about flags. I'd like to share my screen and, and give you a short presentation. Here we go. I'm going to talk to you about what a flag can do for a city and how to go about adopting The first question, of course, is why have a city flag? And there are two fundamental reasons why cities adopt flags. One is an internal reason, that's civic cohesion, bringing the, the residents together with a banner they can rally under. The second is an external reason, that's civic identity, creating a brand for the city. Now, I'm going to describe what all flags do. Flags have many purposes. The first is communicating identity, showing the rest of the world, this is us, this is who we are. They also have a role of distinguishing your group from another group, saying, we're, we're not them, this is us, that's them. They also show connections with other groups. Say your flag is similar to that of another group, and you do that on purpose to show that you're similar or connected to that group. They also build commonality for your community, they show we are together in our community. And the last thing they do is they stir emotions. Flags say, this is ours, this is our place. And we, we like to say that when a city adopts a great city flag, we know that it's been embraced by the people it represents when it starts showing up as a tattoo. Here's a, a nice quote from longtime vice president for United Way in Wichita. "The thing about this flag is that it doesn't matter which side of the river I'm on, it doesn't matter whom I voted for, it doesn't matter whom I cheer for. There's no barrier, there's nothing that I have to worry about because we're all on the same team." That's the kind of spirit that a flag can evoke for a, a city. I want to talk about how flags are used, because that informs their design. We all think about flags flying on poles, but they also hang limp indoors on a flagpole. Sometimes they hang downwards, like in a, in a gym. They, they're, they get depicted in a small size on a uniform patch on public safety employee shoulders. You'll see them in lapel pins, you'll see them painted on buildings. They also adorn vehicles, like public safety vehicles. They're used in happy times, sports celebrations, also sad times, they sometimes cover caskets. They fly with other flags, also the state flag and the national flag, and perhaps with other cities in the same county or the same area. They also get used in tourist memento stickers, t-shirts, mugs, and they get used in ceremonies, exchanging flags with visitors from another city. All of these things inform the flag design itself. Now, now to talk about the flag adoption process, I, I like to say that this is 10% design and 90% politics and public relations, and I'll bet you all understand that. You'll, you'll hear these kinds of comments when undergoing flag design and adoption. Don't you have better things to do? We want you to fix the potholes. Don't waste our money on this, that's a waste of time and money. And if, if a flag is getting changed, it's, oh, you're, you're trying to cancel our history. But those are usually minor issues. Flag change can be a very positive thing, or flag adoption can be very positive for a community. So thinking about how to get a flag, I've engaged with lots of cities, and I've seen two basic ways that flags get chosen. The first is a public competition, and the second is engaging a professional, and it's about 50/50. The, the public competition engages the public, where you, you ask people to submit flag designs. It's a feel-good project for the city. It's wonderful for kids as well to get them involved. And by having the public involved in submitting designs, or even knowing about submitting designs, that creates public support for the eventual flag when it gets adopted. A downside is it takes more effort and time compared to the other option, which is engaging a professional, hiring a, a design professional, or having the city staff do it, or having volunteers help you with it. Engaging a professional is obviously easier and faster, but it excludes the public from the process, and it can cost more if you're paying that professional. If you do go down the road of public competition, the next steps would be to determine a process and a timeline. And I have shared with Mayor Diaz, and I think he shared it with you, many of my thoughts that I've advised other cities with on how to determine that process and timeline. And the first step in that, after you decide to do it, is naming a committee or a commission that's in charge of overseeing this process and lining up staff support. If you go down the road of engaging a professional, my organization, the North American Vexiological Association, has people who love helping cities design flags. And we've been involved in many of them. And so you could get it done for free with folks that I can bring to the table. If you hired a local designer, those designers would need advising on flag design because it's a very narrow specialized form of design. And you'd want to set a timeline and goals for that professional. And the resources that you need to do this are sort of three. Committee oversight, you, you need some group to oversee the process and, and handle the politics. You'll need some staff time to do the process, whether you're, you're hiring a, a professional or doing a competition. But you can recruit volunteers to help you with that process, both within your city and if you ask for design help from my organization. And it doesn't cost much money. The process can be done with, with staff work and volunteers. And if, if you do have some expenses, like the first run of flags and things like that, that can be covered by donations. I, I want to make sure that I, I speak, actually, I'm going to talk about the, the resources and the next steps. Because I, I want to say, I, I mentioned that this can be a feel-good project for the city. Beth Haney, the mayor of Yorba Linda, saw redesigning first city's flag as a feel-good project during COVID. And it got lots and lots of support in that process. And they ended up with a fantastic design. Aaron Mendenhall, the mayor of Salt Lake City, also did a flag redesign project in Salt Lake City and had the same results, a fantastic, world-class design flag. And they saw those as ways of engaging the community in something fun and positive rather than the things that often you, you have to deal with as a city council. So I, I did want to mention flag design. I, I wrote the book on flag design, actually, I compiled the book on flag design, which was the thinking of many people who know about flag design. And the basic principles that are now quoted widely are simplicity, meaningful symbolism, using few colors, don't put lettering or seals on your flag, and being distinctive. Don't, don't, don't match somebody else's flag unless you're trying to be similar to it for a good reason. But I want to tell you just a little bit about city flags. 20 years ago, we looked at 150 city flags and asked the members of the public and our members to rate the designs of those city flags. And these are the 10 highest rated city flags in that survey, mostly larger cities in the, in the United States, but all very, very good designs. And they are widely used in their cities. Since then, there's been a wave of flag redesign and revision and adoption. And here are some recent flags that we polled people about in a new survey. And these floated to the top. These are among the best new city flags. Notice that they are simple, they have meaningful symbolism, probably, two to three colors, mostly, no lettering or seals, and they're quite distinctive. Now, at the same time, there are many bad designs, or I would say ineffective flag designs. They might work for being one flag hanging in city council chambers, but if you want a flag that's going to be out in your community, representing your community to the world and to its own residents, you want a more simple design. Imagine flags hanging on the light standards through the main street of Clayton, so that when you've driven into Clayton, once you've passed the welcome to Clayton sign, you know you're in Clayton. So I'm warning you, these are the flags designs that came down to the bottom 20 years ago. These are more banners, and they really don't function well as a flag design in all those functions that I talked about that a flag does. Well, I, I took a look at Contra Costa cities. You're looking at the worst in our, in our survey, but Contra Costa cities almost all have this same design, I, I call it the business card design, that it, it works if you're looking at the screen, close up, but not if it's flapping on a flagpole. So I, I'm going to show you Contra Costa's city flags. They're very poor overall. And I think what you might take away from this is you have an opportunity in Clayton, you have a chance to stand out among these Contra Costa city flags. Nearly all of them just put their name on the flag and sometimes their seal. Often it's the logo of the city. It's really the logo of the city government. And that's a, a big challenge because who wants to put the logo of the city government at their house? Or, or, or fly it, or, or, or get a tattoo of it? What you want is a, is a symbol for your entire city, not your city government. Here's the, the rest of the Contra Costa cities. Now, there, there's only two that really stand out to me. One is Pittsburgh, that's the one in the middle left, because it doesn't have any lettering or a seal on it. I really like Pleasant Hills logo, you could just take the wording off. We like to say if you have to write the name of your place on your flag, then your symbolism has failed. So I'm, I'm showing you these as sort of a challenge to you when you get to the design part. But I, I want to make sure that if you haven't done so already, you watch Roman Mars's TED Talk, Why City Flags May Be The Worst Design Thing You've Ever Noticed, That You've Never Noticed. And that might help inspire you to be involved and support this initiative for your city. So I'm, I'm going to stop there and make the case that your city can have a great flag, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ted. Anybody from the city council have any questions for Mr. K?
Well, I, I do have one. So you, excuse me, you had two options there, option A and option B. And I was just wondering if you've ever had a combination of the two where a professional creates several designs, and then the community votes on which one they think is most popular?
That's an insightful question, and yes, we do see that happen. I advise cities to get public input. If there are several designs, I say get them to rate the designs. If you're down to, say, three designs, you can have them vote on them. But if you get a professional, and, and by professional, I would also add, people who know about flag design, you can get some designs and share them with the public. So yes, a, a combination of those two can happen quite easily. I'll, I'll just relate. Last month, the mayor of Boca Raton called me up and said, we're looking at getting a, a flag, but we don't want to do a public competition. I've got some ideas for a flag. And I brought in a couple of other people in the conversation, and in half an hour, we had designed four different great designs for him. And he's running them around and, and getting them sold within his, his orbit, and then he's going to take them to the public. So insightful question, and the answer is yes.
No, I, and thank you for answering that. Because I think, you know, if we do decide to do this, we could have a lot of fun with it. And I think it would be a great civic, community engagement activity. So thank you very much for your presentation.
I think you're right. And I'll, I'll add that if you do a public competition, you want to make sure you're, you're timing it so that you match the academic calendar, so that you can get teachers getting their students doing designs. You don't want to announce it in August and close it September 15th, for example. And you don't want to announce it, you know, December 15th and close it January 15th. You want to make sure that students can do it. And if you have kids doing it guided well, kids can create great designs. And having kids involved, whether or not their designs win, builds support among their parents for the idea of a flag. And having kids involved is kind of magic fairy dust on a, a project that makes it exciting to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the city council? And by the way, Ted, I thank you for putting that group of flags together from Contra Costa County. This leadership team attends a monthly meeting called our Mayor's Conference. And every time we go to a different city, and by the way, we will have it here in Clayton in April of next year, most, all the cities have a flag on display in addition to the United States flag and the state of California flag. So?
So you have an opportunity to join that group and be a leader in that group. You know, one of the, one of the misconceptions that people have, and this happens for almost anybody who encounters flag design, is they will say, well, how will people know that it's our flag unless we write our name on it? And I ask you, how do you know it's Canada's flag, or Japan's, or France's, or even the United States flag? In fact, we would think it's pretty silly to write France on a flag. Why do we write the names of our cities? We should have something that's memorable. You, you should have a design that's discernible at a distance, and then something memorable, whether it's Mount Diablo or something else, that people say, oh, I remember that's Clayton's flag. And then that becomes your symbol.
Thank you. There's no other questions here from the city council, and I'll open it up to public comment. I have one card, Scott Dinslow, front and center, please.
Now, is this really public comment, or are we asking questions of Ted here?
Either you have the floor.
Very well, I got three minutes, I'll use it wisely. Ted, I've been through this process before, back in the 90s in Virginia Beach, a town of about 3 million people. We started out with about 12 people, they were on this little flag designing committee, and it turned out that the community just kind of got behind it, rallied behind it. And like Kim said, the children participated, it was a wonderful community thing that really brought everybody together. And, and we kind of did it on our own, you know, so to speak. And so I'm asking you, what, what would the, the cost be? We're in a very precarious situation cost-wise here in, in Clayton. What exactly would the cost be? I know you talked about a lot of bringing in donations, you know, we, we talked about that with other events in town. What exactly would the, the cost be based on whether we went with, like Kim said, providing multiple designs so that we could choose in a community versus just asking you to provide a single design? What, what exactly were we looking at there? Because, and like I said, I've been through this process before, and just trying to understand the value a little bit clearer.
Well, what you described of having community members get involved is one where people are volunteering to do it. So aside from some staff time, which is overseeing the process and providing perhaps a page on your website and gathering the submissions, doing a, a formal process there, there's very little cost involved. Even flags themselves, once you have a flag, every, most places have flags, you have to buy the first set, and then you budget because they wear out. But flags aren't that expensive. And as I said, you can actually create a way where you, you buy a bunch of them and sell them, and the profits pay for the flags that you use. There are communities who think that they need to spend $30,000 on a graphic design firm, or need to have a prize money of, of $1,000 for the winner. You don't need to, you don't need to hire professionals, and you don't need to offer a, a cash prize. I'll tell you, the glory of being the person who designed the flag for one's place is enough for most people.
Yeah, especially for people that live in that community. I can only picture a fourth grader that ended, ultimately ended up designing the flag, you know, that was chosen, it would be a beautiful thing. So yeah, honestly, I think a flag is long overdue in this town. I think it's a great civic opportunity to bring the town together. You know, my only thing is, let's do it the right way, let's be inclusive. Let's, it was strange, you know, this is the kind of thing that usually you'd see, you know, signs around town, you know, let's get people together, surmise ideas. And, and Jim, it looks like you were talking to Ted, and we just found out about it a couple of days ago, it showed up on the agenda. I appreciate you reaching out to him. But I, you know, I'd be a little more concerned about, I wouldn't want this to be a, a Jim Diaz legacy flag anymore than I want it to be a Scott Dinslow legacy flag. So let's get the entire community involved. Let's make sure that we turn this into, like Kim said, we could turn this into a festival, we could turn this into whatever we wanted it to. We can create whatever we want to bring the town together. So Ted, I appreciate your time. Jim, I appreciate you reaching out to him a little more public next time, please, a little more timeliness too. But yeah, it's a great idea, let's just spend our limited money accordingly, that's, that's most important. And let's make sure we have inclusivity in the community in the design process, Ted. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, that's one of the side benefits is this is not intended, first of all, this is again, intended just to be informational only. What do you need to do to get started? And nothing more than that. But the one side benefit that I see is, as you've stated, Scott, is it's a may, a way of bringing the community in together to assist in this process. And there would be a spot for anyone interested if that's the way we decide to go, to participate in that. That's one of the main functions of that. And plus the fact, it's, it's something we can look to, hopefully, and come up with a sense of, you know, real strong feeling for our community and what, what direction we want to take. Anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Walcott?
Scott didn't turn the microphone off, by the way. Yeah, it's okay, Scott. I know you're going to find this hard to believe, but I agree with everything Scott just said. I mean, this is an all-time first. I think it's a great idea. I appreciate the mayor bringing this forward. I don't remember Pete Lawrence bringing this forward, I was probably on the council at the time, that was a long time ago. But I agree, we need to get community, community involvement in this. And you form a committee like we've done on everything else, you get, you get the citizens involved, and maybe even have the high schools involved, or elementary school involved, where they help design this flag and start moving it forward. So I would suggest, I know it's just informational tonight, but maybe you could put it on the agenda for the next meeting and take some action on this, and form a committee and move this forward. I think it's an excellent idea, and it looks like we're one of the few, I didn't know this, we're one of the few cities in Contra Costa County that doesn't have a flag. Now I feel inferior, so we need to, we need to step up.
We don't want to feel inferior.
That's right, we need to step up to the plate here. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item or ask questions? Anybody on, oh, we've got several people online that I see. Who do we got first, Madam City Clerk?
We have Ed Miller. Your microphone is available.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. I, I got to say, Mr. K. is an excellent advocate and has an irremovable smile that would be infectious with any, any group of people that we were trying to get on board with this project. And, and, and should we progress with a project like this, I would, I would say, this is, this is the man I would want right alongside us because he clearly knows the subject deeply. And I did a little bit of reading myself on, on this as well. And I guess about, about 160 cities out of the 480 cities in California have, have flags, so about a third or so. And, and a lot of them have, in the last five or five to seven years, gone through a lot of redesigns because, as, as Mr. K. has said, they picked too many colors, it's too complicated, there's a lot of writing, and there's, I read an article by Mike McFate that talked about this, and, and just kind of talked about some of those design principles that have really come to the, to the top lately about, you use few colors, don't write words, you know, no words, and so on. Anyway, I won't re-litigate all that stuff. The only thing is, Mr. K.'s coming in unfortunately without a lot of context of his community, and we kind of, we just had our, 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 our city staff in a blender, it's, it's, we're still in the process of gelling, we have a new, a new, whatever position you name in the city, it's, we've got a new person sitting there right now. And I worry about, less about cost, that cost, the money will not be meaningfully big. I worry about the I worry about the cost in staff time at a time when we really need to be getting like the irrigation fixed in the city parks and, and looking at the damage to the hiking trails and stuff like that. I think this is a great project. I think the timing is not right for the city at the moment. Um, you know, 250,000 in the red, and, well, and that was before, I guess, whatever got voted in the last meeting that got added on. And then there was also this, uh, contract that we were voting on tonight, which is going to add more money to that red, redness. So I do think this would be a great project. My exhortation would be, um, soon, but maybe not exactly right now. I, I think it'll be a, a good project down the road. And, uh, like I said, Mr. K, you are a tremendous advocate for your, uh, for, for your purpose. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ed. Anybody else online there? I see somebody calls Spots. Okay, whoever that is.
That's me, that's Karen Neves. Sorry, I must have signed up when I was using my Girl Scout campaign. Um, I just want to keep it interesting. I actually am calling in to say something very similar to what Ed said. Um, I'm not opposed to the idea of a flag. I think that the timing is off, um, and I am also concerned about distracting our city staff from the other projects that we have underway and the other concerns, especially fiscal concerns, budgeting concerns that we have right now. I think we need to stay pretty focused on those if we want to find our way through to a solution there. Um, I, I echo what the other commenters have said about inclusivity in the process. I just think the timing may not be right at this point, and I would prefer that it be pushed out, um, just to save our staff the effort of having to say they're overworked and they can't fit in the work that they're supposed to get done because they're working on, um, another project which isn't going to resolve our budget issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Okay, no one else?
There are no, they're speakers.
Thank you. We're now going to close the, uh, public, uh, input on this item, and, uh, we'll come back. And again, as it is a, uh, item for just information at this point, uh, we will take, uh, what we've received, the public comment that we have, and, uh, we'll work with the staff on bringing it up at a future, uh, future, uh, agenda item to discuss it and how we would, might move forward. Without objection? Okay, that concludes item 8A, and Ted, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Okay, item number nine. Council items limited to requests and directives for future meetings. Anybody? Nope.
Just me.
Councilmember Tillman.
Or not just me, but me. Um, I'll reiterate, which, which I've been doing for the last 12 months now. It was pretty easy to get a discussion about a flag on the agenda, um, without even requesting it at a prior meeting. But I've been asking for a year for us to discuss, um, the work environment for staff at City Hall, um, a possible censure policy, and nothing has come to fruition. So either we need to make a decision, or you do, and say that you're not going to bring it forward, or else I'm just going to keep asking every time, and it's not political. It's, we need to discuss this so that we don't continue to have turnover. Now that we have qualified people sitting in these seats, I'd like to keep them. And the only way we're going to do that is if we actually discuss why people fled in the spring. So I would like for us to have a discussion about hiring a third-party investigative, um, body, and also having governance training for our council. And I would like that to come back sooner rather than later.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close item nine. And we move now to council reports, and I'll begin with, uh, Councilmember Juan.
Uh, it's actually been quite a, a busy, uh, time outside of council duty, so I don't have a lot to report. I've been traveling, uh, for work, uh, quite a bit, so, uh, mostly just emails that I've done, and that's about it. So that's the end of my report.
Excellent. How's a member Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. From the 19th through the 21st, I became an empty nester, which was exciting, and moved my daughter down. I'm sorry that I missed the, the actual car show, um, but I was attending, I'm an event down in Southern California after moving her in, and it was War Heroes on Water, um, which was an event for combat veterans. So again, I'm sorry that I missed the Hispanic Heritage Month event. Um, I would ask that we know about those a little bit sooner, so that I can make arrangements to be there. On the 26th, I attended the East Bay Division of the League of California Cities last week. Um, as I mentioned earlier in my remarks, I was elected the second vice president, um, for the league in our division. On the 27th, I attended the Elected Women's Luncheon last Friday. And I know that the vice mayor will talk a little bit about Betty Boatman possibly, but we did have a tribute to her at that luncheon. Um, she served on the water board district for over 40 years, and she was a stalwart in our, um, community, um, and started the Elected Women's Luncheons some decades ago. Um, and then on the 30th, I attended our Pride Board meeting, and that's the end of my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clovan.
So we're, the Pride Board, Pride Board is getting the midst of getting our 501(c)(3) together. That is going to be some effort, making sure it's done right, and looking forward to, uh, future events, and it's exciting times. One of the things I really do appreciate about Clayton is how the CBCA has created this downtown atmosphere with regard to our bocce courts. And recently, this past weekend, uh, the Clayton Valley Charter High School football team had a cornhole tournament at, at our bocce court, uh, courts. And, uh, again, that whole atmosphere just brings alive our community on an evening what didn't exist before like that. And just, just full gratitude for what they've created down there. With that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Kim Trupiano.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll be very brief. And I do, I just want to say about the Low Rider Car Show, uh, those banners went up in June, because we had two car shows in June and two in July. And the Low Rider Car Show had been advertised on those banners. We had a flyer, we did some social media. Uh, thank you to our new city manager for coming out that day. I had so many people say thank you so much for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. We'll make sure that when we set a date next year, it doesn't conflict with other car shows in the community. Uh, but the mariachis were fantastic. I want to, you know, Frank thanked us, Mr. Gavidia, thank you, because I know, um, you really put a lot of effort into that as well, and we'll make it bigger and better next year. So, um, I also want to thank our assistant city manager. She spent some quality time with me, many quality time moments with me, but, um, really going over some financials that we're finalizing for our city-sponsored special events. We think we have all of our expenses in now, and we have all of our revenue in now. And, um, probably at our next meeting, at the end of October, we'll be, um, talking about, um, those final finan, financials. And I had a really great time with our new city manager. We went to the East Bay Economic Development Alliance Economic Outlook Forum, uh, last week in Lafayette, uh, two hours, and I am waiting to get the slides and, uh, from both of the presenters, which were excellent. Um, and then I'll share them with, well, I'll share them with Stephanie, and then she can share them with everyone on the council. It was really good because it totally focused on Contra Costa County. You know, sometimes you go to an economic development forum and it's, um, more about the entire Bay Area, and there was some of that, but, um, and also I attended the Contra Costa Association of Realtors annual event on September 19th, and, um, had some great discussions, uh, with local realtors, um, about our community, and I always enjoy attending that every year. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Uh, mine very briefly had various city meetings, starting on the 18th with, uh, city folks, including the city manager, on the 19th County Connection Board meeting. Keep those buses rolling. And we ran into a problem, believe it or not, uh, with some of our battery-run, uh, buses, and they're now being fixed and addressed, but we have a good fleet of diesel buses out there that keep the traffic and people moving. Again, as Vice Mayor Trupiano mentioned, on the 21st, we had the classic car, uh, number five special for the Hispanic Heritage Month, it was a great event. It was, I played a very small part in that. Uh, it was done mainly by the community, the Hispanic community. Uh, Vice Mayor Trupiano, uh, did a yeoman's work in getting all the publicity out, and we had our city clerk, uh, Stephanie Cabrino, Cabrera Brown, also helping us with some of the logistic. We thank you for that. Uh, let's see, on the 26th, uh, the Contra Costa County Water District held a special meeting for city officials and other elected officials on their plans for what their future holds and what we can expect in terms of the provisions for water in this, in this area. Very informative, uh, brought back a lot of stuff, and, uh, one of the things that we need to do at some point is getting out to the dam out in the Vasca de Arros and taking a look at that, because the, the water, we rely totally on the delta for the input of our water. I'm sure we get some rainfall on that, but that's where the majority of the water comes from. I met with the city manager this, this morning, and, uh, that concludes my report. And, uh, I would like to adjourn the meeting in the memory of longtime Clayton resident, Pete Kobreck, who passed away on the 19th, excuse me, the 15th of September. Over 40-year resident, uh, active member at St. Bonaventure's Church, and, uh, we pray for his family, and we'll adjourn the meeting now at 8:41, till the next meeting on April, excuse me, October 15th.